Welcome to Pownell Select Board on Zoom Thursday, April sixteenth at six P M. Everyone out there, I would appreciate it if you would be patient with us. This is all new to us and we are having glitches and we are all trying to work together. So, on the agenda of our special meeting is um approval of minutes, warrants, approved excess weight permit, gravel bid award, blacktop bid, liquor license renewal for Pownell Market, approved zone, paid Zoom account, um twenty twenty Select Board appointments, Green Mountain Racetrack follow-up, um public comment via conference telephone. The public can call one eight oh two eight two three zero one one six, extension eleven.
I think that's extension one one one.
Excuse me, it is extension one one, yes. Um. Can you guys still see me? Cause I don't see you.
Uh no, it uh it uh I think Priscilla put it to the agenda, which was a good idea.
Oh, okay.
But we should probably go back to you.
Yes. Um so I need approval for minutes from three twelve. Do I have to second it?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, we have to go by um roll call, so I will say I approve. Jamie? Mike?
Approve. I had to get off of mute.
Okay, um Bob?
Approve.
Ronnie?
Approve.
The eyes have it. Thank you. Alright, second is warrants. Payroll ending three fifteen for ten thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and a penny. Um payroll ending three twenty-two for seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Payroll ending uh three twenty-nine for nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seven cents. Payroll ending for four five, eight thousand fifty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Payroll ending four twelve for nine thousand four thirty-six thirty-three. And then for the thirty-nine for three twenty, three uh excuse me, thirty-four thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. And some of the high things on that was um testing for the treatment plant, the water technologies for seven thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-eight cents. Um warrant forty for three twenty-seven, twenty-four thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Some of the high things on that was MVP Health for seven thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty cents. The Bennington Sheriff's Department for four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Warrant forty A for three thirty, three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-three cents. That was for Green Mountain Power and the Huzick River Hydro Clear. Um warrant forty-one for four three was seven thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Warrant forty-two for four-ten, thirty-two thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and a penny. That was some of the high ones for that was the Sheriff's Department for five thousand six hundred and eighty. Gun Throw Associates for eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Warrant forty-three um for four seventeen, four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and thirteen cents. Um some of the high things for that was twenty-seven thousand five hundred interest payment, one-time only to the sewer bond. They have a motion, please?
Motion to accept warrants as read.
A second?
I'll second it.
All favor, I'm in favor. Jamie? Okay, that was warrant forty-two on four-ten. Mike?
Approve.
Um Bob?
Approve.
Ronnie? You guys have it? Thank you. Alright, approval for the excess weight permits.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh Mike, you probably have to go on mute when you're not talking.
Well.
Are you on mute?
I believe so. Let me check.
Uh you're not. We, I could, there you go.
Okay, so I need a blanket motion to approve all. Do you want me to list them? Alright, this is for the approval excess weight permit. Um Basin Brothers Trucking and Company, A R Sandry and Company, Eli's Brother Trucking and it's Trucking and Company, Maine Brothers Oil Company, and Cancelo Construction. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor, I'm in favor. Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
In favor.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
You guys have it? Thank you very much. Alright, so now we're going to the gravel bid award. That was awarded to Hunter Excavation and Company. This is for the crushing of the five thousand cubic yards of stone. At five twenty-five per cubic yard, for the lump sum of being thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And we have twenty-nine thousand assigned for that, so we have to move two thousand five hundred from a line. Is that correct? Okay, so um I make a, I need a motion? Second?
Okay.
Okay, I approve. Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
I approve.
Bob?
Approve.
Ronnie?
Aye.
You guys have it? Thank you so much. Um back to number five, which is the blacktop to bid, we got a letter from um Joel. Now, do you want me to read this letter? We are planning to do a full-depth redemption on Snake Hill and Dean Road. Basin came in at forty-eight thirty-one. Peckham came in at five-two seventy-five for ro- for reclaiming both roads. I will get Basin for that. We will start, excuse me, we will still have to rent a roller and supply fluoride for the job. Then three inches of base coat and one inch of top coat for the black topping. We also have to put the guardrails back up on Snake Hill Road. We will put one thousand two hundred ton out to bid for the two roads. I am also planning to keep going on Putting Stone West and will use approximately five hundred and seventy-one tons on that. Approximately seventeen hundred tons total. We still have to finish last year's paving on Barrington Road and the first section of Putting Stone Road that we didn't get to because of the weather shut us out. That was seventy-four sixty-three per ton. Hopefully, we can keep the price or less for this year. We have one hundred and sixty-nine, nine hundred and fifty, sixty-four cents after our grant of ninety-seven thousand two hundred for Maple Grove Road. Less than the budget from last year, F Y two nineteen and two twenty. And a hundred and fifty-five thousand in this year's budget for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one season. Funds not used will carry over from year to year. Next year, I am planning to work on Hidden Valley Road and Upper Mason Hill Road, which are both getting passed over topping the blacktop. Any questions, please feel free to call me. So, we need a motion to approve. What about Ronnie or Bob?
That was Ronnie.
Second, Ronnie's second. Any discussion? Okay, I approve?
I approve.
Bob?
Approve.
Ronnie? So the eyes have it, thank you. Moving on to liquor license renewal, um Linda got an email. It says hello, oh, I'm trying to get clarification on the renewal of liquor license. I have one that always is a little late. And that is for the Village Market. So um I came in and I signed, signed for it. So it could be sent to the state for him to get his liquor license at the Village Market. You're welcome. And then um we need a motion to approve it.
Second.
Any discussion? I approve.
I approve.
Mike?
I approve.
Bob?
Approve.
Ronnie? So the eyes have it, thank you. Alright, we need to talk about approving Zoom. Um obviously, we're gonna have to do this at least once a month. Um I guess it's fourteen ninety-nine a month. Linda, I had one question. Do we know what the um kind of protection and privacy and security that they have? Like what information can be let out there? Not to get back to us on that. So.
How much time does that?
Twenty-four hours, correct, in a month's time?
Okay.
We have plenty of time, twenty-four hours in one month, and that's for fourteen ninety-nine. Yes, a hundred users. Um so we need a motion for that.
Motion to approve Zoom as uh motion to approve.
Thank you. Second? Any other discussion? I approve.
I approve.
Bob?
Approve.
Ronnie? You guys have it, thank you. Alright, now approval, um moving on, excuse me, to number eight, twenty twenty Select Board appointments. Okay. So we have, do you want me to list this? Linda, what's vacant? Alright, fence viewer, we have vacant. We need two people for that. Pound keeper, small animal, we need one person for that, and that's one year, and that's vacant. Large animal for one year, and that's also vacant. Town service officer for one year, we need one person for that, and that's also vacant. B C R C delegate, we need one person for that, that is three years, that's also vacant. Planning commission, we need two people for that, it's four years. Um we have four people interested. Um the D R B, we need two regular people and two alternates, and that's for three years, and we have six people interested in that. Conservation commissioner, we need five people for that for four years, and that's vacant. Lipster for one, and that's a one-year term as well, and it's also vacant. Trustees of Public Money, we need two, and that's for one year, and that's also vacant. We need um Economic Development Committee, and we need one person for that, and that's also vacant. Town Forestry and Fire Warden, we need one, and deputy warning, warding, excuse me, for one. And we have people that are already in that, that would like to do it again. So. Planning Commission. We had four people. We had Brian Harris. We had Tiffany Zing. Zing, how do you say it? Uh Rosemary Pelletier. And Mike Slattery. Slattery, okay, I said those names properly, sorry. So, I need a nomination?
I nominate Tiffany Zuwanga for Planning Commission.
Angie Long? Any other nominations?
I'd like to make a comment on Angie. Hang on, I'm up. How close, does anybody know how close our town plan is to being done right now?
Well, the town plan is approved. Uh it's the uh, it's the bylaws, I think you're asking about.
Uh oh, and there, and the, aren't these, the, isn't the Planning Commission working on those as right now, Bob?
Uh yes, they are.
Okay, so I'd like to nominate Mike Slattery for Planning Commission. I know he's been pretty instrumental in the bylaws, and I'd like to continue that consistency.
Do we have a second? So in that case, we move on to somebody else. Is there another nomination?
Uh well, I nominated Tiffany. Did we get a second?
Yes, but we have another nomination.
I nominated Brian Harris.
Ronnie, Ronnie, you said?
Ronnie nominated Brian Harris.
I second Br- Brian Harris. So. Let's look at Tiffany. She said. So I say aye for Tiffany. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Alright, and the second nomination was Brian Harris. We had. I say aye. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Alright.
So it looks like we have Brian Harris and Tiffany Zingwa. I'm sorry?
Um nah, never mind.
For Planning Commission. Alright, now for D R B, alter- we need two regular and two alternates. I would like to make a nomination for Scott Wells for the D R B. You have a second?
Um I think we probably need to mention whether we're nominating for primary or alternate.
I'm sorry, primary. Did you, did everybody read the letter?
Uh yes, I did.
Okay, so I make a motion for Scott Wells. Do I have a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I. Mike?
Well, hang on, um Angie, I think we're supposed to
Oh, discussion.
Put the table first, right?
You wanna put the table first, right, I'm sorry. So I need a second nomination.
I'll nominate John Bushy.
Okay. Alright, now we want the two alternates. I'm giving me Win- Winchester. A second? Alright, uh second alternate. Do I have a second?
I'll second Cindy Legg.
Okay, so we have all four on the table. So let's go back to Scott Wells. Any more nominations? None?
Um, well, um I'll nominate Carl Stromeyer as primary.
I'll second that.
So we have three nominations for.
For primary.
Okay. So we're gonna start with Scott Wells. So I say yes on Scott. Jamie? Okay, Mike?
I say yes on Scott.
Bob?
Um I've, nothing against him, but I'm saying no because I've got two other nominations.
Okay. Alright, Ronnie?
I, for the same reason, I'm gonna say no.
Okay. Alright, and then John Bushy? I say yes. Mike?
I say yes.
Bob?
Uh a yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Alright, so we have John Bushy for um D R B for primary. Alright, and then the third primary was Carl Stromeyer. I say yes. Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Alright, so our other primary is Carl Stromeyer. Alright, our alternatives? Was Brian Harris. I say yes. Jamie? Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Uh yes.
Ronnie? So our first alternate is Brian Harris. Yeah, I thought it was Cindy. Cindy Legg, I say. Mike? Bob?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Alright, so we have our four. Alright, moving on to E G C Economic Develop Committee. One person, thank you. I nominate Brian Harris.
I'll second.
Alright, any um discussion? I say yes. Jamie? Mike?
Yes.
Uh Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Thank you, so it's Brian Harris. Alright, so then we have the recommended appointment for fire warden is Greg O'Dowd and Deputy Estate Justin Olansky. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion for the board to cast one ballot for both positions simply. They're the only ones that have applied and especially setting a motion.
I second. Any discuss- Okay, I say aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
You guys have it? So that's Greg O'Dowd and Justin Olansky. And now we're moving on to number nine, the Green Mountain Racetrack. We got a um under review for large gatherings. We are reviewing that and we'll bring that back to the table in the future. Moving, any discussion on that? No. Um number ten, public comments. Has anybody received any public comments from anybody through email or phone?
Um I did get the uh, I got a phone message, complaints about Mason Hill Road and ATV usage.
Okay. And what did you tell them? To call the Sheriff's Department?
Sorry, he uh he had mentioned that he already did, and it was a voice message, and unfortunately, I didn't get it till days after he left it.
Okay.
Uh cause I don't check the, the home phone very often.
Right.
Uh but one thing I I might suggest is that we reach out to the Sheriff's Department and ask them to put a little more emphasis on that. I think our two big problem areas, if I understand it correctly in Pownell, are Mason Hill Road and the racetrack.
Okay.
So we probably wanna let the Sheriff's Department know that uh in the allocation of hours that we purchased, uh that should be their primary focus.
Okay.
Uh at least that's my, my thoughts on it. I, I would be interested to hear others, cause I don't know that those are our two biggest problem areas. There could be other areas that I'm not thinking about.
Okay, does anybody else have anything to say on that?
Well, that, you're speaking just on ATVs. You've got other issues going on in town that they are working, so.
Well, the, the complaint, uh what I heard about the racetrack wasn't ATVs so much. Uh I mean, ATVs are down there, but it's more of the partying and the, and the unsafe conditions inside that building. So keeping uh, keeping the partiers out of there was important for that area.
Right, V S P responded down there the other night, um because there was an active fire in the building.
Yeah, and in the building, they have, there's multiple fire pits. They, they have fires there all the time. That's part of what they do down there.
Okay, I, I think we should put the racetrack on an agenda for our next meeting.
Yep.
When we're not, when we're not limited to a hard forty minutes, because I think we really need to address that um sooner rather than later, not just the large gathering, but the racetrack itself.
Absolutely.
You know.
Yep. Okay. Um, well, that's it on our.
I, I had, I've had, just had a couple of public comments, Angie.
Okay.
One was from um basically the road crew. They're under some new guidelines that came out um the fourteenth or two days ago. Um, so we gotta give them a little bit of directive. We need to look at the guidelines uh as a select board and give them some directive on what direction to take. Um, they're working a two-man crew with Angel right now, rotating, and you know, trying to keep some stuff going.
Yep.
Um, so we need to look at that, we need to probably look sooner rather than later, even if we have to have a special meeting on that.
Okay.
Um, and then another concern that is um, he's actually in the banking business, is worried, not worried, but is kind of saying um with the bond, if you have to borrow money with tax bases, um mortgages are getting paid kinda on time, so to speak, so the, so the, you know, the mortgage, the escrow accounts, it's just something we probably should pay attention to. And maybe we already are, somebody already is, I didn't know that. It was just brought to my attention.
Okay. So we can put that on for our next meeting. Anything else?
I know Joel said that they've been primarily working on cleaning out the sides of the roads and the gutters and um the covered areas and stuff, so if we do get higher rains, um we won't end up hopefully with an emergency washout since they haven't been able to do the regular grading, all that kinda stuff.
Yep, okay.
Um, this is Bob. I, I think we need to be careful. Uh to Mike's point, um uh the directive was somewhat specific in what we got in the email today from Joel as to what the road crew can and can't, and we could be exposing the town to a potential fine.
Exactly.
So uh uh, and that's, so regular maintenance is not part of it. I think they're only supposed to be doing emergency work.
Right.
If you, if you don't, if you're gonna have major emergency work.
Yeah, I'm not saying I agree with the directive. I'm just telling you what the directive is, or as I understood it.
Right, I'm just, I mean, like.
Well, I think there's.
But we have to follow the rules and regulations right now, and.
I think we just need to, we need to sit down and, and read it. It just came out. I mean, we, you know, all of us, I mean, I haven't read it to totally understand it. In what I did read in that particular email was that regular grading, filling in major pot walls could continue. Uh you know, on a, on a limited basis. I mean, I can't, they can't go start their spring grading, but it could continue on a limited basis. And as and as needed basis, if there's some really problem areas. That's, you know, that's why we need to discuss it. That's just, you know. That's, you know, that's why we need to discuss it, that's just, you know, once again, just my opinion.
Oh, I agree.
Do we wanna, uh, uh, just assign that to Joel and have him, uh, familiarize himself with the directive and make sure that he's adhering?
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with that too, Bob, I'm totally fine with that, yeah.
Does that require a motion or just a call to Joel?
Run a motion?
I'll make a motion to reassign that to Joel, and let him, um, you know, follow the directive. Know, and, and he's gonna do the right thing, I mean, we know that.
Alright, I'll second that, so I say yes.
Yes.
Jamie? Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Alright, anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, oh, one last thing, I just wanna remind, uh, I'm sorry, I, I did have one other complaint, I forgot about it, um, uh, the, uh, uh, I just wanna remind all town employees, when you're interacting with the public, and this includes. If you go to, uh, if you need to go to somebody's house, uh, uh, or, or interact with the public in any way. To, to make sure that you're practicing that social distancing, and, and, uh, and where possible, make sure you're wearing a mask. I think we had somebody, uh, go up to a house without a mask, and, uh, uh, kinda freaked out the owners there.
Right, I don't think people realize that that went into effect in New York yesterday, and I'm assuming that Vermont will soon follow that. You must wear a mask out.
Right, and, and whether it's a directive or not, it's, it's, it's just a good practice, I think.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else from any?
No, no, I'm all set, thank you.
Ronnie, anything from you, hon?
Well, I'm all set.
Anybody else here?
Are, are we gonna go back to which, every two week meeting and starting to, next, not next week, but the week after? I mean, I would make that motion that we should.
They want us to distance ourselves as much as possible.
I just think there's some things that need to be taken care of, the racetrack is a fairly important thing, in my opinion, that probably shouldn't wait any longer than it has.
So, then, the recommendation until May fifteenth, and then two weeks would be what?
It'd be just before, uh, May fifteenth, I think.
Yeah. Be a couple of weeks before.
Uh, you're right, a couple of weeks, it's, uh, not as late as I thought of.
Yeah, right. Keep pushing, Bob, it's fine.
It felt like May with the snow this morning.
I, I think we should have one in due.
How's the rest of the board feel?
Um, I, I would say, I would say two weeks, that's my opinion.
I'm fine with the two weeks, um, uh, but we, remember, we can always call a special meeting, and I think that's what you first suggested, Mike. With the special meeting just for the racetrack.
Well, I mean. This new thing, um, I, I'm comfortable dealing with it two weeks from now, Bob. Uh, you know, other than, you know, I, I, I think if we got back to an every-two-week rotation. Um, you know, I, I think it seems like, like the warrants and everything, there was a, a significant pile of warrants that were out there. Um, you know, we just, we're getting into the time of year when we have to do some different things. So I, I, you know, I think going to an every-two-week would, would make sense.
Uh, you know what, I, I agree with you, Mike, I, I think if the closer we can get to normal, see the better.
Alright, what did you think, Ronnie?
Well, on that racetrack thing, I think we oughta get some information before we have a meeting.
Okay.
I think we're gonna find out if we can do anything, what we can do, what we have to address. That's above my pay grade, and figure that out, so. But I think we need somebody to, to tell us, because I've seen in other towns where they said, well, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that. It wasn't legal. So I think we have, have some information, you see.
Well, I think, in my opinion, Ronnie, that's, that's why I think we should have a meeting, so that we can sit down. And, and even if we just have a meeting to just address the racetrack, I'm fine with that. I just think that we need to do this, it's, it's a pretty significant help risk for. Everybody that goes in there, our first responders, we're, we're giving those guys, um, and girls. We're, we're setting them up for failure by sending them into that building, that's my opinion, and I did this, I was in the fire department for thirty-five years or whatever it was. Long time, we're setting them up for failure.
I, I absolutely agree with that, uh, we're, uh, we're actually setting them up for, uh, for injury, uh, which is even worse. And so, uh, um, however, um, I, I, I think, knowing Ronnie's suggesting is that, is that we assign some research and come in with some knowledge to have that meeting to make it more productive. So between now and then, we can do some research on what are our options, can, can we condemn the building, what would it take to condemn the building, what does that actually mean? Um, uh, can we, uh, close the gate, you, you have to have the access to the cemetery, those kinds of things, I think. Uh, uh, and do we even own it, who owns the gate? Uh, it's currently not working, but I think, I, I think what the, the suggestion is, if we can assign somebody, or get somebody to do some research. Uh, I think just the meeting would be more productive. I'm okay with, let's put it on the agenda for two weeks from now, and then, uh, let's do as much research as we can between now and then, and, and see if we can get some answers.
Wouldn't some of those questions be for our lawyer, Bob, and I don't know, I'm just asking that question.
Uh, uh, some of them might be, but some of them might not, I mean, uh, there's a whole lot of questions, right? So, I, I think, I think it's more of a, uh, it's a standard to say, what does it take to condemn a building, and what does it mean? Um, that might be a lawyer question, but it could also just be a research question. Um, uh, and, and we may not even have that option, I, I don't know that, it is private property, and I, I do have, uh, you know, and. Uh, and then, then maybe that's another thing too, is we can do, can somebody try to reach out, I know it's hard to get a hold of, the, uh, the, uh, the owner. Uh, and, and see if, uh, and, and see what he thinks, and what, what he can do to, uh, uh, maybe even putting up no trespassing signs. Right now, people go down there thinking that they're not breaking the law, because there is not one single do not enter sign.
Right. Okay, so, my suggestion.
They're not leaving cities and towns. You know, could they help us in any way, they have a lot of towns they're representing, I'm sure we're not the only town that has a building that's in question. People are in that shouldn't be in, or what have you. Uh, maybe they would have a little advice, I don't think we have to pay them for that, maybe. I think we're, uh, uh. We can, we can talk about anything we want, but if we have nothing to stand on, what can we accomplish?
Right.
Well, how about this, can we, can we schedule the meeting, schedule a meeting anyway, and then, uh, and just. All of us try to get as much information as possible, so that we, we don't come into it dry.
Okay, so this isn't my suggestion, my suggestion is that we set up a special meeting, not a regular meeting. A special meeting in two weeks. And moving, if we can move forward with it, we will get as much information as we can. But for our regular meetings, I know that we wanna get back to doing everything normal, but we have to follow the guidelines. And, um, some people aren't comfortable with the, um, meetings happening here. So, let's just take it week by week and see what the, um, guidelines are. So I wanna keep everybody safe.
I agree.
Okay. So, two weeks, we'll set up a special meeting about the town, or, excuse me, about the racetrack. And we will try to get as much information as we can from all the resources that we can get a hold of. So, what day would that be on, a Thursday, and that, the thirtieth, at six, is six good for everybody for a special meeting? Bob, is that?
Yeah, that's good for me.
That's great.
Okay, does that sound like a plan to everybody?
Yes.
The town office has been doing a wonderful job, Linda and Julie and Priscilla, keeping things all going. Um, emails. Everything's great, so let's keep it that way for right now, until everybody can be safe.
Yeah, one other thing. I brought the information for the permitting stuff for the town hall, does anybody have any questions on that?
Are you talking about the two bills?
Yeah, well, the other, there's two more, more coming for the A and R permit. Um, I, I haven't given her the green light, cause I didn't know if you guys had any other questions on that, but it's required for us to take and move forward.
Do we need to motion, do we need to, uh?
I didn't know if any. If anybody had any questions or whatever, I had gotten some feedback, that some people thought it was a little high, some of the other work that was done, but. Um, I talked to a couple other engineering places, and just to take and get people on site to start a survey, let alone do the copy. Um, layout is gonna be at least five thousand dollars. So, they came in around sixty-three, I think it was. Um, so we were still in the ballpark, because doing the topographical layout and all that stuff. But I just. I'm gonna take and tell her to go, go ahead, go forward with it. Um, unless somebody had any other concerns, that's all I do. Because somebody from the public reached out to me, I just wanted to take and, uh, ask the rest of the board members.
I, I agree. Yeah, I agree with you, Jamie.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward with that?
Yep.
Mike, move forward with that?
Yep.
Bob, you said move forward?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Okay, is that it? Now may I please have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? All in favor, me, aye. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Thank you all, you all have a good night, and please stay healthy.
Uh, you too, Angie, thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye.